I'm going to call the Springfield City Council Work Session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Uh, Counselor Weber.
Here.
Counselor Mo. Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Blackwell.
Here.
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Here, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Mo is excused for the evening. Uh, we have four items tonight. They are all interviews for different committees. Uh, the first one is Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee with our, with Drew Larson. I was gonna make a joke about Stoicism, but uh, he came up here too quickly.
Uh, we'll definitely have to have a bigger conversation about Stoicism later. Um, but my name is Drew Larson. I am the Senior Transportation Planner for the city of Springfield. And tonight, as mentioned, we are doing Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, uh, interviews. Following the last recruitment, we had one vacant position and subsequently I had one resign. He is in the middle of his PhD program and just didn't quite have the time for the committee. So I have two vacancies on the B-Pack this evening. Um, I had two applicants, but I didn't see her by the time I came in. I'm hoping she shows up, uh, in time. Uh, otherwise Marshall Curry is here and he is scheduled first.
Okay, we have three questions in the packet. Um, do you guys want to break up the questions?
No.
Next time I'm not giving you guys an option. We're doing this three times tonight.
Okay. Well, I will go grab Mr. Marshall Curry.
Thank you. Hello, Marshall.
Hello, everyone.
We are gonna go through, introduce ourselves and then I've got the couple of questions because apparently I volunteered for them, but we'll start right down here and let folks introduce themselves.
Hey, Marshall. Nice to see you. Michelle Weber.
Hi there, Marshall. I'm Victoria Doyle, Ward Five.
I'm Corey Rodley, she/her pronouns, and I'm in Ward Three.
Uh, Sean Van Gordon, Mayor.
Joe Pictionary, Ward Six out of Thurston.
Hello, Beth Blackwell, Ward Four.
All right, you ready for the questions, Marshall?
I think so.
All right, here we go. What strengths or skills do you bring to the B-Pack?
Uh, Mayor Van Gordon and Counselors, thank you for having me. Um, I'm a passionate user of the, um, bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. I'm out every single day with my dog or one of my two children. Uh, and I'm also biking on a regular basis, um, through the city. And I, um, have years of experience working on volunteer committees, uh, alumni associate, uh, nonprofits, uh, as well as some with, uh, overlap with local governments. And I'm very excited about this experience to, um, impact the public works, uh, utility that I use every single day and, uh, make it better for my children, uh, and hopefully their children as well. Uh, I have, uh, about, um, 10 years almost of nonprofit experience and, uh, working closely with local governments to provide different services, ranging from education to food services, uh, and, um, I've also worked for about five years with local governments and universities, um, partnering, um, you may be familiar with the Sustainable City Year Program, uh, out of the University of Oregon, which did some projects with the city. I worked with an organization that worked with those types of partnerships all over the world for about five years. And I, um, managed or reviewed or was involved with thousands of projects across the focus of local government, local development. And hundreds of them had to do with transportation and biking and walking and making sure our places are comfortable and easy to use, um, as well as the economic development in incentive to all of that. Um, so I'm really excited to bring all of that perspective. And I also, um, with my experience in nonprofits, have worked in areas that seem relevant to the B-Pack. I've done, um, grant analysis, grant writing. Uh, I've looked at website development, engagement, um, and just kind of all the other pieces of running an organization. So I hope to bring all those to bear, uh, to benefit the committee.
All right, great, thank you. How do you think the work of B-Pack improves our community?
Um, I was first introduced to B-Pack by Emma Newman, uh, when I was a student at the University of Oregon. I was participating in a student group called Live Move, which is kind of like a, um, similar type organization as B-Pack, but just with students at the University of Oregon. And I was really inspired by how the work plan and the work that Emma was doing really led to, uh, the creation of safe and comfortable alternatives to driving across town. So folks could get where they needed to go. And I believe that through the work of B-Pack and, you know, reviewing the work plan earlier today and the year-end report, um, I think the changes that this committee can help, uh, make in the, in, in the city, um, really increases freedom, uh, the boat, the ability to move safely across the city. And so I'd like to, uh, help support that work. And I think that that's how, um, B-Pack impacts the community.
If you could make one positive change in Springfield, what would it be?
I was kind of, uh, concerned about what level my answer would be, uh, you know, how high in the sky I should be. Um, I know, uh, you know, if I could create land, uh, right in the middle of downtown and have it be multi-use and have it bring in lots of, uh, property tax. That would be probably, I'm sure, really beneficial, uh, to Springfield, but I don't have that power. So I think, uh, to answer the question, I'd like to just take more residents on trips through the infrastructure that's here. Over the last few years, we've developed such amazing infrastructure. Um, you know, past the, my bro, my son calls it the lumber mill path, uh, but the Booth Kelly path. Um, just to highlight, you know, what is Springfield and how it works and show them how to use the, uh, service request tool when they see things on the road that this committee has been involved in. And I think taking those steps might make Springfield a little bit better for other residents.
All right, thank you. That's all the questions we had. So, um, we're gonna let you go and then we'll keep working, working through this and somebody from the staff will call you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Van Gordon and Counselors.
Thank you.
Fortunately, uh, Ms. Jenna Lindstrom is not in the hallway. Uh, I did get confirmation that she was going to be here, but something must have come up that, uh, was unavoidable. So I apologize.
Okay, um, so it's two applicants for two vacant positions. We're gonna be interviewing for the next hour. So if she shows up somewhere between seven o'clock, right? Like, you know, just put her in the back of the queue and we will, we will work her in.
Perfect.
Um, one of the questions that I think, um, that I had about Marshall is he's outside the UGB. Does the B-Pack have a cap on how many folks are, come from the UGB?
He's outside the city.
I'm sorry. Yeah. I'm sorry. He's inside the UGB, outside the city limits.
Um, that question I am unaware of. I mu, I must have missed that in the application. Christina, do you have any insights on this one?
I don't right now, but I could pull up that information and be ready when you get to your deliberations.
Yeah, so let's keep, unless somebody's got specific questions about B-Pack. My, I think we should probably just keep going with the interviews and give Christina a chance to find us an answer and then we'll come back to it closer to seven.
Great, and I will go give my other applicant a call. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. All right. Budget Committee is next.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jessica Mummy, the City of Springfield's Budget and Procurement Manager. Um, one candidate this evening, Ashley Hickon of Ward Five, applied during the initial application period for the empty Budget Committee seat. Applicants were sought to represent Ward Number Three. The vacancy was the result of the term expiration of the prior appointee. Council may interview the applicant from Ward Five and appoint to serve on any ward. Though the Budget Committee charge describes that appointments are by ward, this is not a requirement of state local budget law and is at the council's discretion. The appointee would serve a three-year term that would expire on December 31st of 2026. With that, may I answer any questions or shall I grab Ashley?
Um, okay, so in, right now in the current posting that we have live, are we still posted for this position?
We are, yes, for Ward Three.
Okay, thank you. I'll go ahead and bring in Ashley.
Hello.
Hello, Ashley. Um, I think you've met everybody.
Um, she's, she's the new one.
Okay, so we're gonna, we'll, we'll start. Well, we'll let Beth introduce herself before we ask the questions.
Beth Blackwell, Ward Four. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
All right, Ashley, I've got a couple of questions. Why are you interested in serving on the Budget Committee?
Well, I guess some of you know, but Beth, you're new, you're a new face for me. Um, so for the past six years, I have had experience, um, serving and dealing with, um, my local homeowners association. And it's through this experience that I've learned the importance of planning, not just, um, financially, but in a lot of aspects of our development. But financially, we plan an annual budget and we also plan for the future. Um, we have a reserve fund and reserve study and things like that that we have done to make sure that we're sufficient. And I know the city has many different demographics that it serves. And I understand that, um, if you serve the many and I want to ensure that my demographic is being represented.
Back to the questions. While all of Springfield's services seem to have strong support for different areas in the community, it is often necessary to prioritize services for budgetary reasons. How would you go about the task of prioritizing, of establishing priorities among services?
Okay, so initially my mind goes to prioritizing needs over wants and trying to figure out what is necessity and something that can be put off maybe a year. I would try and put that off, but before doing so, I'd want to know what the ramifications of that decision would be. How would it affect the community?
If you were on the Budget Committee and we're looking at one of city services to decide how much should be funded through general taxes and how much through specific fees on customers, what questions would you want to have answered in order to make your decision?
Um, so with HOA, we have our governing documents that govern how much we can raise our dues, how frequently we can raise them. There's rules about special assessments and I know that the city adheres to some similar sets of rules. I would want to know what those rules are. Are we abiding by those rules? Um, before making a decision, I'd also like to know historically what has been collected in taxes for said service versus the service itself. Cause I want to ensure that we aren't overburdening our citizens by making drastic changes.
How do you think the work of the Budget Committee improves our community?
Um, the work of the Budget Committee ensures that everybody is being represented as far as the various demographics that we have throughout the city and we have a lot of them. Um, but it gives everyone a fair shake and provides balance so we can improve the community while feeling like everyone's represented.
All right. That was the last question I had.
Can I ask you guys a question?
Sure.
Is that allowed?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I know that you guys serve on Budget Committee as part of your roles. And I was curious, if you were in my position, what is something you wish you knew about the Budget Committee before becoming a part of it?
Oh, we're gonna let somebody volunteer for this. Anybody wanna?
It doesn't have to be all of you, just.
I would, I would first ask what the commitment is in regards to the amount of meetings and what days they are and how long they are. So I would make sure that I wouldn't have a, a automatic conflict and then resolve that prior to the meetings. And then secondly, I would probably see if it's possible to meet with a counselor or two to get their input in regards to the spending, if they had some suggestions of, of where your personal interests are and guide you to who to ask those questions to. Maybe the city manager or to, or to a department head.
Okay.
Victoria?
Um, thanks for the question. I actually started my journey with the council, um, on a Budget Committee back in 2007, 2008 in Cottage Grove. And, um, I know that I came in with a lot of ideas and, um, because I'm used to being in the private sector. And I found out very quickly that there are things that in our mind, as private sector people, we think we can do. And then we find out that that's really not the case. So I think along with what, um, Counselor Pictionary said is to find out if you do have a question and say like, why are we spending money on this? Um, as, as ask the people that are, that are on the Budget Committee. And then again, the, the city staff, they're very, very, um, approachable and, and like to answer those questions. And they're very neutral in how they give those, those answers, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'm gonna offer my two cents here because now that, you know, we've got us, got ourselves off task. Um, I think going into it, I would want to know why things work the way they do. Um, because there's a very, very specific way that budgets are put together and, you know, with very specific reasons. And it's easy to have great ideas and want to know different things. But until you understand, how do we get from kind of point A to point B to fund the city? Um, you know, that really, that knowledge is really the basis for being able to influence the conversation.
And one more thing. What, what Counselor Doyle's talking about, but specifically, what's the difference between general fund dollars and dedicated dollars? And dedicated money dedicates to certain things. General fund has got the flexibility and you'll find that the general fund pot is much smaller than the dedicated funds pot.
Okay.
All right, now that you, you know, asked us the best question of the evening so far. We still have a lot of interviews, um, to go through this. And I think we may have more Budget Committee interviews. So I don't know that we're gonna make a decision tonight, but we'll definitely have somebody reach out and just let you know what's going on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the remodel looks really nice.
Awesome.
Hello, good evening, Mayor and Counselors. I, I'm Emily David and I'm here in the capacity of the Staff Liaison for the Library Board tonight. And the Library Board has one opening due to the resignation of Susan Boganschild, who is moving out of the area. We had one application and that's Ophelia Guzman, who is here to apply this evening.
All right.
Any questions?
Nope.
I'll go in.
Hello, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Oh, good.
Rushed in here.
Well, you're, you're, you're the middle of the interview so far, so we're do, we're making good time through everything.
Okay, great.
Um, I don't think you know everybody here.
No, I don't.
All right, well, so we'll start with, down with Michelle and let people introduce themselves.
Hi, Michelle Weber, Ward One. I'm Victoria Doyle, Ward Five, which is, I like to call Thurston Light.
Thurston Light, okay.
I'm Corey Rodley, she/her pronouns, and I'm in Ward Three.
Uh, Sean Van Gordon, Mayor.
Joe Pictionary, I'm Thurston.
Hi, I'm Beth Blackwell and I'm Ward Four.
All right, what strengths or skills would you bring to the Library Board?
Let's see, I can use my bilingual skills. I don't know if anybody else is bilingual here or already as part of the board. Um, probably as bilingual individual, um, of course, 100% Spanish. I can, um, help bring a lot of the, um, hmm, maybe make the community feel a little more comfortable if we were to bring a lot of the information or translate the information into Spanish. And I'm so sorry, I'm like extremely nervous because I was not expecting this. I thought it was just you and Emily. I'm saying, oh, surprise.
And, oh, yeah. So we understand, we, we hang out with us all the time and we feel the same way. How, how do you think the work of the library improves our community?
How the work in the life, oh, and the community, well, there's still, well, there's a lot of activities that we need for the kiddos, teenagers, uh, especially because it seems like nowadays a lot of teenagers are a little, they're not doing sports. Well, a lot of them seems like they don't do a lot of sports. Are probably just stuck at home playing games. Some unfortunately getting into trouble and spreading the word that there's other activities to do in the library. Although sometimes you say kids or pre-teens, teenagers, think of the library a little bit of a boring environment. And, uh, but by providing activities, maybe we can start communicating with them that it's a little, it can be more than just library. There's activities and there's fun things to do in here too.
Perfect. And if you could make one positive change in Springfield, what would it be?
Related to the library or just one in general? Anything? Um, same. Besides what we've already been trying to do as bringing the community as one, just continue to work harder to do it. It's gonna take a long time.
All right. Thank you so much. I only had three questions.
That's it, okay. Just kidding.
We are gonna keep interviewing folks, um, and then when we get to deliberations, um, somebody from the staff will give you a call.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. Are you ready?
Hi, Mayor. Hi, City Council. I am Madeline McGraw. I am your museum curator and, um, staff member for the Springfield History Museum Advisory Committee. Uh, we have two vacant positions right now, um, due to Kira Leslie and Zachary Goselouis both leaving the committee. Um, Kira, Kira moved and Zachary had a, um, just a scheduling impact that, that didn't work for him on the committee. We received one application for the two vacant, uh, positions. And so this would be for a full term with an expiration date of December 31st, 2028. And our one applicant was, uh, Jennifer Isley, who was waiting outside.
Excellent. I think we are ready for her.
Cool.
Hello.
Good evening.
Thanks for coming in. Um, I'm Sean Van Gordon, I'm the mayor. We're gonna go around and do a, a quick round of introductions. Um, Michelle, do you wanna start?
Hi, I'm Michelle Weber, Ward One. Victoria Doyle, uh, Ward Five, Thurston, lower Thurston area.
I'm Corey Rodley, she/her pronouns, and I'm in Ward Three, which is up the middle of Springfield.
Joe Pictionary, Ward Six, Thurston area.
Hi, I'm Beth Blackwell, Ward Four.
All right, you ready for your first question?
Yeah.
So what strengths or skills would you bring to the Museum Committee?
Um, I'm a good community organizer. I work for an environmental justice advocacy organization and we host a lot of public events. So, yeah. Thank you.
How do you think the work of the Museum Community, uh, Committee improves our community?
Um, it's just so rich with arts and culture and history and it's, um, like a lot of the events that the museum staff currently, um, sponsors or organizes are just a really, um, valuable contribution to our community and, um, attract a lot of people.
If you can make one positive change in Springfield, what would it be?
Um, so right now I'm already working on, um, a land stewardship project, hopefully at Doris Ranch. And we are working with local nonprofits to involve the native community and the Latino community and really just anybody who walks down the Middle Fork Path. We want to, um, replant some camas in that area and host some cultural events and, um, involve a lot of local groups and students, youth, people from the university. So I would just, oh, and we are also working on a mural. I have, um, that would be like Native American themed. And I'm already working with Marta Lou Clifford and some other, um, Kalapua descendent, um, local artists and historians. Um, so that we're still looking for a wall location. We already have a grant through the art, a small grant through the Arts Commission to start that project. And, um, I'm currently, um, organizing around a similar parallel project, um, located at West Borland Park in the, in Eugene. Um, it's on the Coleman Community Center. It's a 60-foot Kalapua history mural. So I would really just like to, um, bring something like that to Springfield.
All right, that was all the questions that I had. Um, we are gonna move on to deliberations. So, um, we will, um, talk about the appointments we wanna make and then somebody from the staff will give you a call. Thank you so much for coming in this evening.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Uh, thank you for your patience. Um, my other applicant was able to make it. Uh, she is just outside the room, uh, Ms. Jenna, Jenya Lindstrom.
Uh, then show her on in. Thank you. Hello, thanks for joining us. Uh, we're gonna go through a quick round of introductions and then I'll ask you a couple of questions. Michelle?
Hi, Michelle Weber, Ward One. Victoria Doyle, Ward Five.
Corey Rodley, she/her pronouns, and I'm in Ward Three.
Uh, Sean Van Gordon, Mayor.
Joe Pictionary, I'm from the, the Ward Six Thurston area.
Beth Blackwell, Ward Four.
All right. Um, what strengths or skills would you bring to the B-Pack?
Uh, I think one of the things that attracted me was when I met Drew and he was out, um, providing education outreach. That's, um, part of my background. I'd love to be a part of helping inform, um, other people about what, what we do. And, um, I also am an avid walker and biker and I have kids. And, um, I'm kind of, I mean, a year into being here in this area, but, um, we've explored all over the place and I just have a perspective of how can we make things better and how can we make it more accessible? And I'm always doing things like with an extra load, um, and somebody hanging on with one hand. And I feel like just having that perspective of safety and awareness of what, you know, what's around us and how can we make this better?
How do you think the work of B-Pack improves our community?
Well, I was really excited to hear about, um, I attended the last meeting, I think it was the last meeting. Um, and it was really interesting, the surveys that, uh, that go on. Um, I just feel like there's like a double thing. There's the actual work that goes on that they do. But there's also, like, if, I've never been involved in city government ever before. Um, and so it's that informative piece of becoming an involved citizen in a way that I've never experienced. So I think any organization, um, doing the work has those two, probably, probably more than two, but at least those two, the actual purpose and then the byproduct.
And if you can make one positive change in Springfield, what would it be?
Um, I think looking for ways to connect people more readily. I think that, you know, the downtown area does a really good job of that. And then the areas that are further out.
And then the areas that are further out are maybe I don't know if there's a unifying place. So, yeah.
Thank you, that was my last question.
Okay, great, thanks for having me here.
Well, thanks for coming down. We'll have somebody from staff give you a call.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna start with deliberations for B-PAC, so Drew's gonna keep me honest, we technically have three spots, right?
Two vacancies, two applicants.
I thought you just said, said you had somebody resign.
Uh, I had, yep, I had one vacancy after the last round of applications and then I did have somebody resign, yes.
Two people, two spots. And Christina, what was the answer to our question?
It's a multi-part answer, so the first, so first, the B-PAC's bylaws don't specify that members from outside city limits are permitted. So when that happens, we go to the council's operating policies and procedures. The council's operating policies and procedures, if you get the right tab open, in section nine talk about residency requirements. And it states that unless appointees are representatives of other requested Springfield public agencies or otherwise noted in bylaws for specific expertise or residency, all persons appointed shall be residents or property owners within Springfield, which is generally understood to be the city limits. All appointees must also be registered voters with the exception of student appointees. However, the council operating policies and procedures have a provision that applies when your policies control committee appointments, which is that you can suspend that portion of the rules if you have two thirds majority agreement. So the short answer is generally B-PAC members are not, the, the at-large neighborhood voting members must be residents of the city per the council's operating policies and procedures, but if you have a two thirds agreement, you can suspend that on a one-time basis.
All right, so I think we've got two people we've gotta decide for, so I'm interested to hear what your focuses take are, so the reason we're asking is the first gentleman, Marshall, he does not live in the, does not live in the city limits.
Uh, per his application, yes, he lives in the urban growth boundary.
So if he lives outside of the city limits, what like, what are your guys' take here, do you want, do you still wanna appoint him, do you wanna pass on him, go ahead, Joe?
My take is that I'm sure there's gonna be people that say that's finally like all qualified people, but the, the angle or the direction I'm looking at is that, especially with like the Budget Committee or even the B-PAC Committee, the B-PAC Committee gets involved in a lot of projects that causes the, the expenditure of tax dollars of Springfield resident tax dollars. And that if they are not part of the taxation, then they have no, no dog in a fight. They don't have any stake in the fight in regard to spending those dollars. So that is the purpose for having those rules is that we wanted everybody inside the city with the, with the voting rights, et cetera, and the, and the residents within the city. Now, I think that we have that exception for some exceptional committees such as our Historic Commission where someone has got some, some educational background and actual historical retrofitting renovation experiences, which we've had, and the same thing with the museum committee who have had some expertise in the arts. So in this particular case, even though I feel he's very qualified, he's very well, he's actually very well spoken and and regretfully, I, I don't think I could support that based on there's, there's very little stake in the game for him in regards to those types of projects that cost money.
All right, Corey.
Thank you. I don't entirely disagree in that I think we do want people who are invested in Springfield and I know that when we've looked at folks previously, we've also looked at where they work. And I think one of the things that influences me on this is that he works in Springfield. And while he doesn't live in Springfield, he is still within the urban growth boundary. So those feel like very strong ties to Springfield and very strong investments or strong enough for me to consider him as a member of the B-PAC.
Michelle.
I agree, Marshall would be a wonderful asset to the committee. I have just previously been asked by folks that don't live in the Springfield city limits if they would have an option to, to serve on this committee and I've had to tell them no based on our, on our rules, so I would on that alone, just we're setting precedents and I, I think, I feel like if we're gonna do that, we probably just need to make that change or be very clear as to what we will, except for, you know, across the board.
All right, Victoria. I know, I'm just, I'm missing people, so everybody's gonna get a chance to put their opinion in.
It's tough because after hearing him, it sounds like he would be a really a good benefit to the committee and has a lot to bring to the table, but I, I think I do have to agree with the fact that there's something about being in the city and, and those dollars that you spend knowing that you're and then there's the catch 22, well, then if that's the case, we should have people that are willing to apply, which they didn't, right? And so, so that's a tough one, I'm, I'm willing to go either way, I, I don't have a major feeling for it one way or another, but I, I do kind of lean to the side of being outside of the city limits is probably should be an exclusion. So.
Same, I mean, he's obviously very qualified and would be a great benefit to the committee, so that's a tough one, I mean, based on that, I would say absolutely, but that brings up a very good point. And where's the precedent if he, I, I've had people also ask about these committees when, when we started advertising for the, to fill them. And they're like, oh, I, I can't, and I've even told people, you can't because you're not inside the city limit, same thing, so that is a, that's an issue, I mean, where does it start, where does it stop? Do we change that?
Thanks, I wanted to wait for everybody else to go first, I think that I think one of the things that's challenging for me in this is that, you know, as Counselor Weber said, we need to get really clear about it. Because for someone to get this far in the process and us to say, no, we think you're disqualified, that feels like a waste of someone's time and feels like we don't have our stuff together. So if we, if we know what our rules are, we know what our bylaws are, then we need to stick to that because I just, that just doesn't feel great to me to say it in a, as soft a way as possible. So I think that we need to figure this out so we're not deliberating after someone has filled out an application, gone through the process, come down here and we're like, oh, we're sorry.
Go ahead, Joe.
So a few years ago, I don't know how many years ago, not that many, and council created a committee. And we went through and decided on every single committee and what the makeup is of that committee. We landed on multiple committees that would not accept anybody outside of the city limits. We made some allowances on some committees that have for two people that are outside representatives, either within the UGB or even owning a business in Springfield. But it was very clear. Now, there was, the exception, of course, what Christine was talking about is where there literally is a an oddity or something that is a special need for, like I said back with the Historic Commission or somebody that can bring us a special expertise. An educated expertise or certified expertise where we would be looking at an exception. That was really clear. So I'm standing behind that direction and that it was a council, it was a council decision and it was made up specifically, so it's not as muddy as it may be the impression, so Christine, can you help me out as far as clarity here?
I'm sorry if I muddied that, the, the intent was to communicate that the the there's no special circumstances for the B-PAC, there are no special business owners or occupants, residents or special expertise noted. So it defaults to the general rule, which is the council operating policies and procedures, which requires a two thirds majority to change, as opposed to, I think the bylaws just require a simple the, the committee bylaws require, require a simple majority, I think, to adopt. So it, the council's rules are clear that a person must be a resident, it's unfortunately, and maybe this is something I can flag for Mary Bridget when we do the next round of bylaw, sort of universal bylaw updates, we could be clearer in each committee's bylaws themselves what the general council rule is. But right now the bylaws follow the general rule unless there's no special exception, so for example, Planning Commission has two UGB members allowed. Short Committee has at-large members that need not be residents if they have special expertise, for example.
All right, so Victoria, why don't you jump in and then I'll wrap this thing up?
Which is really quickly, it, it sounds like that the application should never made it to us. So that's not really our yeah, fault, unfortunately, I didn't even know and reading it, I didn't notice that he was outside, so.
So, I, let's settle this one and then I'll kind of come onto that. I, I think, would you politely decline for us, I think that's, you know, it's pretty consistent, it seems like that, that's kind of where people you know, are is that, you know, that we, that, that we don't that he's outside of the city limits, and I think Corey's got a good point about his business, but I'm pretty sure fourteen thirty-six Del Rose is a resident, so I'm making the assumption that, you know, he, he's working at home. Now to Corey's question and Victoria's question, which I think is a really good one. Which is, how do we screen applications and I think the staff's always gonna bring us all the applications. So even though we've kind of got rules and maybe this is a broader discussion about how we screen out applications out and normally the staff's not gonna just essentially DQ people, disqualify people for not qualifying, applying for committees without showing it to, showing it to us first and if if you guys are fine or like, you know, Joe and I can look at them, but like because there's a way we can get out of the rules, historically, they've brought everything to us, even if they're not technically got all the qualifications, if that makes sense. Go ahead, Corey.
Maybe, because I think that's the piece that just, I think then there should be a process for that because it's, it's not, and I'm just gonna be just really plain speaking, it's I don't think it, it's fair or reasonable to have someone come down here and go through this intimidating process and have us in a public meeting be talking about whether they can or they can't. When they could be home having supper with their kids, I mean, I think that if there's a, if there's a process that we know and that we all clearly, everybody's like, this is how we wanna make decisions, then we shouldn't put people through it, just I, that just, that, that's not okay.
Right, but we, and I'm gonna have Nancy jot this down for our retreat so we can kind of get to an answer here. But the issue is, who's gonna actually make, look at the application and make the, make the decision about who qualifies and who doesn't? And I think we can all agree on who that's gonna be. But I, as long as we figure out that question, then we can get to the, the, the second question you had, which is, hey, if people aren't qualified, we should not bring them down, even though I think we're a lot of fun. Sometimes people have other, other things to do, and I think that's probably the most critical question is maybe it's council leadership that looks at them, I don't know, but we've gotta, we've gotta figure out that question about who's deciding who's qualified and who's not.
Well, you, you know, you, the thing is though, is that in any application process, you have a stopgap, you have the HR department, they don't send that on to the hiring committee, they don't even send that on to the management if they see that they don't meet the minimum qualifications, and so that's something that we should be aware of.
Yes, that's why we're gonna talk about it further because we also, we're the deciders, we're everything here, right? And again, if we wanna talk with Nancy about having to be a staff person, we can do that. But like, we have a way, like, we can universally essentially change all the qualifications, right? So we kind of get into a circular, like, if somebody shows up and we wanted to appoint them, the rules say we can appoint them. So we just have to figure out what that means to kind of get around it, so I think my commitment is, and I saw Nancy write it down, it's like, let's talk about it and figure out this question, because we always get wrapped around the answer, you know, axle of this question, and then figure out how to go forward from here, so. Okay. Well, let's go to the second person. Is, second person was the last person we interviewed, is, how are people feeling there? Fine? Okay. So, and I think we're good, so politely decline for one, bring one forward to regular meeting and I, and go find some more folks if you need them.
Yes, I will, and I, I apologize that I missed that, as Christina said, the bylaws are not specific and so I, that's not something I was reviewing for, but we'll get direction and it'll be clear in the future.
This has always been a problem, right, so like, this isn't a B-PAC thing, this has been a broader problem in our appointment process that we're always tweaking, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move on to Budget Committee, Jamie, we're gonna need some help with this one because I think I may have messed this one up. Okay, so this app, we've interviewed one person, but we're still taking applications for for Ward three, is that right?
Correct, yes.
And how long are we taking applications, I think until this Friday?
Twenty ninth, March twenty ninth.
Okay. Since we're still taking applications for this, when, when they brought it to me before, I thought we were interviewing for, I thought we had a three opening and a five opening, so I brought the interview, brought the interview forward, I think it would make sense to leave this open until, until we, to close your day on the applications and see if we get any more interest, go ahead.
Just real quick, I actually asked Ashley to apply knowing that it was a Ward three only and she's aware of that and she, I said, but a lot of times there, there comes a point where we don't have anyone, right, we get to the end and we have an open position, and so she's aware that if nobody applies for that Ward three, then she may have that opportunity to fill that just so that we don't have an open spot and I just I think it's a matter of trying to get the community engaged in the process and so I, I agree completely that we leave it open and see if we get somebody from that ward that's willing to do it.
Any other comments, is the Ward three council are okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Then remind us that we interview, when we see the second application, that we've interviewed one person, so if you can maybe, if we do a second round of interviews, drop this application back in there, so we have it, that'd be great.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor.
Hang on, go ahead.
Are we gonna make her come back in? So you can tell her that, don't worry about coming back in, just wanna make sure that's clear.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Will do, Counselor.
Okay, we're moving down the list, library board or no, you just have to give me a thumbs up too that you're good. All right. Thank you. All right, museum committee. Maddie got the game. All right, I think that is it, so we are adjourned to seven o'clock when we are gonna reconvene with our seat hats on, thank you, everybody.